This is, I pass this down?
No, no. Hang on there. We'll bring out their copies because we're going to have the hearing. I want them to have a copy of it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve next week the minutes for the meeting of August ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
I can make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Before I vote on this or if we end this, I just wanted to say, any question? There's $10,000 under services to do.
Fire inspections and repairs.
And I have no idea what that is. And so I asked Ann to get that information for me. Sounded like a lot to me to pull a fire extinguisher to take a look at emergency services. So, and then I overheard Blake asking a question regarding the vehicles.
Yeah.
What was it about?
Well, it was the six, one of the options is for the payment for the six explorers that the sheriff's department received here a couple of weeks ago. I've been, my, the reason for my question is I've been told by people who work for county automobile agencies that they can get vehicles at a state bid price. I don't know, it's a pet peeve, but I think when local money's spent, I'd like to spend it locally whenever possible. I, I didn't ask the sheriff's department. Now, these are, they're equipped in a special way and it's a possibility that this company buys all the stock that's equipped that way. I, I don't know. And David, I don't know that you knew.
No, I don't, no, no.
That was my, that was my question, but you know, it's like if we're gonna go buy a half-ton pickup truck from someplace in the state at state bid and it's a half-ton pickup truck, we could buy one locally if they can match the price.
And we can do that.
If it, yeah, if it has a.
It's a good question. And I know earlier I was with, when I was gonna get my legs under me in terms of signing all those titles, I sign a lot of titles in my office, for purchase and not a lot, but for purchase of vehicles and so forth. I asked a question because we do have the authority, we can go to the state bid. State bid is not always the lowest price. You can go to Junction. Junction can actually get you a better deal and that's a local provider.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes.
If they have given the opportunity to bid. And sometimes we don't do that. We just go to the state bid, take that bid and move on. And so I think it's something that is, it was a good question. It's something that we need to probably look into. Whenever possible, we ought to give the guys locally in our, in our community the opportunity to bid on these things. And if it's the case where we're going to this particular provider because they're unique, that they, you know, they can outfit the sheriff's vehicles and so on and so forth, that's great. But if it's, Junction can do it at a better, you know, in an improved price and/or can do the same thing, I think we ought to ask the question.
Yeah, this, yeah, this case, this is listed as a Ford utility interceptor.
So that'd be impressive.
KAA. Well, I don't know what a utility interceptor KAA is and except for.
Ford does a production run of explorers that are outfitted as police vehicles. I'm sure other dealers can get the same vehicle because I'm sure a lot of localities may deal with a local dealer, but that dealer has to know ahead of time. It has to kind of put in dibs and say, hey, I'd like to be able to get some of your production run because it's a limited run. And the statewide Ford, they get the state term bid, they lock up a lot of the production because they know a lot of people are just gonna go.
Yeah, they could have these in stock and then you could maybe get it elsewhere, but the time would take.
These are, these are literally one VIN, one VIN number apart. They all came off, because I just happened to, I saw some of the paperwork. They were, they were made right one after the other on the assembly.
It was just, it was a question I'd like to get answered, but it's not gonna prohibit me from voting to pass that.
You know, I think it's worthwhile to have this kind of conversation so that folks know that we're asking these kinds of questions because oftentimes these are asked publicly. We're doing this behind the scenes and people should know we're asking questions. Anyway, thanks, Ann, but yes.
So what's your vote?
Oh, yes.
And I will just add that the, that house for Gilmore Security was a service contract for two years that Dave approved and he noted, I think it was actually last week in session, it's a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 for the.
I kind of guessed that, but I wanted to.
And for maintenance and repairs and the inspections.
Right.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
Now I'm gonna make a wait here while I sign, while you're, while you're signing, I can cover number three, which I approved as authorized by Rev, by your approval, resolution sixteen dash zero ninety-seven. This was simply the agreement with charge tomorrow to use the parking lots during the annual Blue Fest that happened on Saturday up on the square.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Jessica. I was invited to play chair volleyball over there. Have you climbed?
Oh, they are very serious.
They look tough, you know.
They are a tough group.
Pretty aggressive.
They are.
Is this wheelchair volleyball or is it stationary chair?
No, stationary chair. Stationary.
You have to stay in your seat?
Yeah, they don't though.
Sure. I was gonna, they must have a.
It's very competitive. It's a very competitive sport. There's a lot of sports activities that are quite competitive. I think Joe joined us for boxing. Quite, quite the activity, isn't it?
War me out.
War you out.
The crowd is very tough.
These folks were spiking balls in the other people's faces. I was, you know, I looked too dangerous to me.
It is very tough. And Sandy, I don't think any of us could take her on in a boxing match at all.
No, no way.
You could throw your entire weight at her and she will stop you with her scarring gloves.
Absolutely.
So, so we are here, I'm here today for two hires. We had posted two part-time positions. We changed our org chart a bit. We had a full-time food service person at West Giaga because our food service individual, Beth Perrin, is retiring at Chardon. We are pulling the food service from West Giaga to the Chardon site and replacing that with two part-time recreation and education assistants that gives them more versatility to do more things while they're at the sites. So after posting, we have decided on two candidates. The first one is Magali Rios. And this young lady has actually been with us three years through the Job and Family Services Summer Youth Employment Program, through the TANIT program. And so she has been with us for three years and has a lot of experience with the seniors. And she is very excited to come onboard and also start her education at Kent State University. So we're excited to recommend her, as well as Colleen Procop. She works for the Lake County Department of Aging. So she's looking to come to Giaga County and work for us. She has a history working in assisted livings, doing hands-on care with senior citizens as well as administrative assistant work. She's currently an administrative assistant for Lake County Council on Aging, so she's looking to be more hands-on and come to Giaga. Be the great things we got here. We're excited.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve hiring Magali Rios to the position of part-time recreation and education assistant, number one zero zero five dash one, to be effective August twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, at the rate of thirteen dollars fifty-seven cents per hour, within one probationary period. Department on Aging is requesting the board approve hiring Colleen Procop to position of part-time recreation and education assistant, number one zero zero five dash one, to be effective September twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at the rate of thirteen dollars fifty-seven cents per hour, within one probationary period.
I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Clippel?
Aye.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good night, Steve.
Two minutes.
Oh, you're cutting a little close.
We'll try to be efficient.
How's everybody today?
We finally used it, huh? It makes a heck of a bug smasher.
Wow.
You happen to be an aunt, don't get up here in front of Ralph. He'll take care of it.
You guys know Joanna Brace's?
Hello, how are you?
Well, we have the Transit Department, number six, probationary failure of Austin Everhard, part-time transit driver, number twenty-two ten dash one, to be effective August eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. The Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for three positions of part-time driver, number twenty-two ten dash one. These positions will remain posted until filed.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mike, real quick, I want to ask you on that, on that one email that we got from the state with the reduction in grants or the reduction in the state funds that are coming along the pike, is that going to affect us?
Right now, we are, I just talked to ODOT manager yesterday, and last year versus this year, we're, we're being cut, as you saw across the board, we're being cut about $100,000. Now, right now, that brings us very close to our 2015 funding level. And I, I don't want to use the word hopeful, but I'm pretty confident that we can maintain what we have and no additional funding requests from anything, as of right now. I know in fifteen, we had, we had a little bit of austerity program going on. We did pay you guys back some. We're restarting now to kick in that austerity portion right now in anticipation of that. Okay, when I say austerity, that means probably even while we scrutinize our expenses and revenues right now very closely, we'll probably, lack of a better term, we'll come on that.
Okay.
Is there any more potential for advertising revenue increases? Right now, I know we are, the advertising company we have that we use is in negotiations with UH again. Of course, it'd be nice if we could just maintain what we have. I mean, that's where we went from basically five to a thousand, five hundred to a thousand dollars a year to about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand a year. So that's up the sum, so that's investment force. Our, our contracted ridership from the general public has increased about, about $4,000 from fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, in there for six-month periods, some time periods. So we're a little bit down there. Our contracted revenue has dropped because of significant inroads into county fund outside AECs and others that are, that are transporting folks. We've probably lost about, I want to say about maybe $50,000 to $20,000, roughly $60,000. My first job, we averaged about $23,000. These are rough figures, I'm saying, so around $23,000 a month through our contracts. So right now, we're probably about $18,000 to $23,000. And we're having, if you drive around the county, you'll see green vans, wayside rides, TFL transportation, the bike. On our way here, we just saw an unmarked ODOT van. Two guys ended up driving around, I'm sure providing a ride somewhere for somebody.
It's an ODOT thing?
Well, it's not ODOT itself, but it's got the ODOT mark, so it means it's a carrier.
So, oh, it's registered with ODOT, yeah. Got a permit.
Yeah, so with a disability, a ramp and all that good stuff abroad, but like anything else, competition's good sometimes.
You're up for it.
We try to be, yeah, we try to be. So we're working with the state to maximize what we can keep one of the parameters that we're allowed, so that type of.
Mike's very aggressive, pushing the envelope.
You and I still need to go down and talk to Calabria because he offered that to educate us.
I, oh, that, that.
And so I'll set, I'll set that up.
Yeah, I'd love to do that. Yeah, anything we can, yeah, that'd be great.
He offered, I'm waiting to hear the story he's gonna have to tell.
Well, right now, there, if you, if you read all those, those things I said here, they're probably about $18 billion. We're gonna have a deficit, something like that, it fluctuates every time they pay, but I think he teased the number. We'll make it for two people because I'm gonna bring Joanna with me also.
Right, I just got back to New York City. I think we're missing, missing it because we can use the subway. Because, you know, we're underneath three twenty-two and.
Yeah, that'll be cheap. Yeah, that'll save us a lot.
Have our own big dig.
Big dig.
I hate to be rude, but we have the public.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
We have to skip to number ten. So Mike and Dan.
That's our. We have a motion to wave the reading of the public.
Morning. Good morning. I'll move to wave the reading of the public notice.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
You're up.
I'm up.
You're up.
Explain the way.
Basically, public hearing to discuss, hoping to increase the fees for building permits and registration and also to create a new line item for septic inspections, which we haven't done before. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dan because Dan, this is his project, so I'll let him explain it.
Yes, less than the fee increase, I think it was twenty thirteen, when we got hired on, it was one of the first things I looked at. We did do a small increase back then. Since then, I've sort of kept watch of the number of inspections we perform a year. We usually perform about 5,000 inspections a year in our department and our budget is close to $500,000. Ends up being about $100 per inspection to cover our cost of our department to operate. Right now, we're charging about, ends up being about $85 to $90 an inspection, so we're not covering our costs completely. We fall short by $40,000 to $50,000 for covering our department costs. We're just kind of looking to do that, plus fine tune a couple of the things. We're looking at potential for, on a storm damage morning, if you wake up and your power gets knocked down, you know, taken out by a tree, you're required to come into the office here before CEI comes out and re-hooks you up. Right now, you're being charged a full permit cost for having electrical today. It'd be nice to help out some of the community on a morning like that, when you wake up and it's the last thing you want to do is spend more money when you need to have your power permit on, come out and have a, a storm damage permit instead of a full cost electrical permit, just to help those people who are, who are in need of having it done. If, if you're gonna end up having your power, your panel upgraded and your other work done, then it's gonna be a full permit cost. But just to have the CEI come back out, they won't re-energize the structure unless if we go out and do the inspection for them. So it's kind of looking at some of the things like that. We've also had scenarios where there's been.
So give me an example. So, so that would be something that detaches the wires actually from the house then, or?
Well, so the middle of the night, a tree comes down, takes out the wires to the house for above-ground service.
Okay.
And it rips off the mast or just not pulls out the wires. CEI won't re-energize that structure until we go out and do an inspection for it.
But that's, that's only when you've had some damage to the home itself. So if, if, for example, the line up, from the pole to the house breaks at the pole, there's nothing happened to the house, so there's no reason to inspect the house, so CEI shouldn't have any problems hooking the wire back up to the pole. It shouldn't be.
They won't, they won't hook it back up unless we look at it, sticker the meter and.
Even though it had no impact on the house?
If it's, if it's the line running from the street to the house.
That's the secondary. Anything primary is their responsibility. Anything secondary is our responsibility. And, yeah, all we have to do is go out and sticker it and then either call in or fax in the number to, for the work order and then they'll re-energize.
Really? Do you define secondary and primary? Is it, which is either the transformer or, you know, I mean.
From the, from the transformer, either on a pole or land base.
To the house is secondary. And primary is the high tension lines that feed the transformers. So the transformer is the demarcation.
Correct.
Okay.
And the whole purpose of that is, is in case it damaged something at the meter or?
So I, what, I guess, I think what originally, what has originally started was is that when there was so many, when we had our housing market issue, there were so many vacant houses that people were going in stealing any copper they could find. And the guys would energize the house, but they have nothing that disconnects the power into the house. So we got, we had to go in there and make sure that there's a disconnect, that there's a way that, that gets shut off so that if they do energize it, it's not just running into the house to start a fire or anything like that. Or, or vice versa, if a person has a generator running or something like that that backfeeds to the line and jeopardizes the guys that are working on the lines. So we, so we look for the disconnect to make sure that there is, is a way that, that can be shut off and separated from, from the system.
So at least it's safe from that point to the, to the main disconnecting device. After that, could be a different issue, but at least they can energize the panel.
And so with our, with our fees, I did a study with a sample permit cost for surrounding counties along with South Russell. And even with our increases, we will still be on the lower side of, of all the surrounding counties and, and South Russell too. So it ends up being that the, the people who are using us are paying for us.
So why are we involved with the septic system again? Explain that to me. I mean, the health department's always been the guys who go out and inspect the septic system, so why are we not getting involved?
They all used to be mostly gravity fed into leach fields and now they all have air rated pumps and.
You got more electronics.
Drift systems and, so they're running electric out to the, out to the tanks. And so it's a matter of sort of doing the same thing for the, like we do for the power company, that there's a disconnect. So if a guy has to go out there and repair it and they need to work on it, that there's a way to shut that power off in a visible area so that if you're working on it, you go down in the basement to shut off your breaker, that somebody couldn't walk past, turn on the breaker while you're outside working it. So we look for a disconnect there. There's a required depth for the electrical line running out to there so that in future someone puts in a visible fence or a sprinkler system that, that whoever's coming out to truck that in, you know, that it's below any of those, those requirements there, so.
So they get charged double then because Bob's group is still gonna go out and have to inspect the septic system to make sure it's.
Basically, the septic system itself, they don't look at the.
Right, but why?
I mean, it's gotten so confusing on this. The Amish are even okay having electrical services put in just for their septic systems now. So they're putting a channel board out there with a disconnect device where they can hook all the stuff and the visions have said, yeah, it's okay for the septic system. That's how much is going back, I mean, how much electronics is involved in these systems.
And then what we've done with that is if, if it's a septic system for a new structure, it's sort of incorporated into the cost of that new permit at a much lower rate. I think it was $20, $25,000 we decided on, that will get added on for that additional inspection that has to be done for a new structure. Because more than likely, we'll be doing it while we're already out there doing something else for that, for that new structure. They're, where they're getting charged more, so the full rate is when it's a retrofit, where we're making a special trip out to that site just to look at that, that, or do that, perform that inspection.
What do you do for demolition inspection?
Inspection, make sure that it's all cleaned up, all the way to proper landfill. Point them towards Lake County Health Department as far as asbestos removal requirements go. And just make sure they don't just dig the hole and throw everything in and cover it back up again. I mean, you can put your construction block and stuff like that in and cover it up and not, not the wood and the insulation and shingles and everything else, that has to all be hauled away. And they give the ticket, take it up to the auditor and they have it removed for their taxes.
Interesting. When these go into place, I mean, I'm not doing math here, but like for a new dwelling, it went from roughly $197 to $217.
Correct.
What is that, 30 bucks?
So the, the sample, and it was part of a email that was out quite a while ago, just to stretch you of the comparison of all the surrounding communities. So the top has, the top half is commercial fees and the bottom half is residential. So if you're looking at a residential structure, I did a, a 5,000 square foot home. Currently, our, our permit cost for it would be around $434, I'm sorry, $672.
Yeah.
And we're looking with, if everything that the proposed changes go into effect, it would be about $725 for a, for a.
That's for all the permits that they, that are required.
On our.
On each of these columns as a, as an individual.
Yeah, unfortunately, the owners still have to do their, their local zoning, they still have to do health departments, they still have to do driveway permit. So there's other, other agencies that they visit as well, but this is for, on our end.
And so we're looking at a 28, 25, $53, right? Increase across the board from what we had three years ago, was the last time it was updated?
Yes.
Till now.
Yeah.
And it's gonna go up, what did it just say, 53, right?
Mm-hmm.
If my math is close.
But what is the residential plan review? Is that for new dwellings, is that for existing dwellings? What is it about?
Well, sometimes people submit plans and then we go through the whole process and then they decide they don't want to build or they can't do it or whatever. We just charge them for the time that we put into reviewing the plans and the paperwork and everything, but we don't charge them for the permit. Now, commercial, that's a separate, we have a different, we have three subcontracted plan dictamers, so they review all the commercial plans, so. And that's, but for residential, we don't charge a plan review fee, it's just building and the cost of the.
So if I get, if I'm gonna build a barn and I'm kind of going through the design process, trying to figure out what this is gonna be, and I come in and I ask you guys, okay, this is what I'm thinking about doing, you know, offer some suggestions for change or whatever, and I want to make sure I'm, I'm not a zoning guy, so, or not a zoning, but a inspector, so I don't know maybe what to consider. So you recommend some alterations and so forth.
Yeah.
So I go back and I altered it. Now I come back, I'm actually gonna build it, so you're gonna charge me $45 plus the new dwelling fee?
No. What, what happens sometimes is that somebody will bring us a set of plans, we'll review the plans, and then for whatever circumstances, they decide not to build that structure or they don't.
They modify it in some fashion.
Well, if, if they end up with a permit cost eventually, we don't charge a plan review fee for them. If, it's only the people who bring us plans, and it happens maybe a dozen times a year, once a month or so, that someone will bring a set of plans. We'll spend our morning hours reviewing it, looking up, you know, code compliance, putting in the shelf for it to be picked up and, you know, they never come back and get it or they, you know, because they've decided that, you know, they don't want to build that structure anymore or, you know, do the addition. But we've spent our. So if you're looking at a residential structure, I did a 5,000 square foot home. Currently, our permit cost for it would be around $434, I'm sorry, $672.
Yeah.
And we're looking with, if everything, the proposed changes go into effect, it would be about $725 for a...
That's for all the permits that they, that are required...
On our...
On each of these columns, is a, is an individual.
Yeah, unfortunately, the owners still have to do their local zoning, they still have to do health departments, they still have to do driveway permit. So there's other agencies that they visit as well, but this is for our...
All right. And so we're looking at a $28, $25, $53, right? Increase across the board from what we had three years ago, was the last time it was updated?
Yes.
Till now. And it's gonna go up, or they just say 53, right? If my math is close. What is the residential plan review? Is that for new dwellings, or for existing dwelling? What is it about?
Well, sometimes people submit plans, and then we go through the whole process, and then they decide they don't want to build, or they can't do it, or whatever. We just charge them for the time that we put into reviewing the plans and the paperwork and everything, but we don't charge them for the permit. Now, commercial, that's a separate, we have different, we have three subcontracting plan examiners, so they review all the commercial plans, so, and that's, but for residential, we don't charge a plan review fee, it's just building the cost of the...
So if I get, if I'm gonna build a barn, and I'm kind of going through the design process, trying to figure out what this is gonna be, and I come in and I ask you guys, okay, this is what I'm thinking about doing, you know, offer some suggestions for change or whatever, and I want to make sure, and I'm not a zoning guy, so, or not a zoning, but a inspector, so I don't know maybe what to consider, so you recommend some alterations and so forth.
Yeah.
So I go back and I altered it. Now I come back, I'm actually gonna build it, so you're gonna charge me $45 plus the new dwelling fee?
No, what happens sometimes is that somebody will bring us a set of plans, we'll review the plans, and then for whatever circumstances, they decide not to build that structure, or they don't...
They modify it in some fashion?
Well, if they end up with a permit cost eventually, we don't charge a plan review fee for them. It's only the people who bring us plans, and it happens maybe a dozen times a year, once a month or so, that someone will bring a set of plans. We'll spend our morning hours reviewing it, looking up, you know, code compliance, putting in the shelf for it to be picked up, and, you know, they never come back and get it, or they, you know, because they've decided that, you know, they don't want to build that structure anymore, or, you know, do the addition. But we've spent our time and effort, you know, doing something, we're just looking for the compensation for that timeframe.
And that makes sense, but then the other side of that coin is, now they decide to move forward, you're gonna charge them another fee because they have no...
No.
So you just charge them...
That's incorporating the cost of the permit.
Right.
It's not extra.
Just want to make sure we weren't doubling up, because that's kind of a hidden additional increase, if you will, so.
And same with, if you look down at the, in the commercial fees, there's an alteration added, and what that was, is basically, when you, these startup businesses, they'll come into a shopping class or something, and they only have, you know, they want to put in one little partition wall with a receptacle in it. They were stuck right now paying an addition fee, which is, you know, $300 or $285 as a minimum price, just to get us out there for a commercial, and it just, we thought about it, it just wasn't fair. I mean, so we're looking, I mean, we've sort of gone through and tweaked these to match the fairness of what we're actually, the time we're spending on the project, the time we're involved in doing the plan review, the amount of time it takes for doing inspection. Some inspections, you go out and there's only so many things you can look at on a furnace, you gotta look at forest weeds, it's vented, and if there's a, you know, condensate line. So, I mean, it ends up being a, you know, a 15-minute inspection, you're kind of in and out. But then there's a framing inspection that, you know, you might be there for an hour, or like this past week, I've been spending about three hours a day out at Hawken, doing final inspections out there. So, I mean, there's, we try to swing the fees to be more realistic with our time spent for those projects, as opposed to just having a blanket cover.
I'm good with all this, so. Can I just have one last question? I don't want to put you on the spot. Power building permits, are you gonna, housing starts, building starts, how is that going this year, today?
New starts, I think we're right where we were last year at this time. So I think we're approaching, pretty close to 100, new starts.
100 new homes approximately, or additions, or?
Addition, alterations, accessory buildings, those are all up.
Okay, so they don't fit into that whole dwelling thing?
No.
It's 100 new homes?
Correct.
Not, you know, somebody's building a new garage at their house or something?
Home dwelling period, if, so, if they ever start this project across the way here, that'll get started there, the 100 and some units that there's, will be put in over there.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Do we, do we have a...
We just closed the hearing.
I moved to close the hearing, or do we have to move?
No, we just closed it.
We'll close those, okay. Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. When will this come up later?
We have another hearing.
Okay. Is the chimney inspection, which is something that's based on a change, or you just go out and inspect the chimney?
I'm sorry?
You have a chimney inspection out here.
Why, a chimney, if it's rebuilt, if it's a mason or chimney...
If there's a change.
There's certain throat dimensions and food dimensions that...
You only do that if there's a change? You just don't go out and...
Yeah, if somebody's pointing, or, yeah, no, we don't. If it's a rebuild of it.
That's gonna make you go out and inspect my chimney. I'll hire somebody.
He wants you to clean it.
Do you do that?
Bring your red sticker.
I'll come with you if you bring your wire brush. My electric's fine, by the way. Back on. Number eight. How are you?
Good.
I'm Jerry. I miss all that groundwater stuff, I haven't got a chance to talk to you.
I was actually doing some filing and stuff this week, and it came up, I was like, I need to get back to, find out where, where we're at with all that, so. Yeah, first item here is Gail Knight, one of our maintenance workers, he's gonna be having some procedures done, and he doesn't have the time to cover it, so we're asking for approval for 80 hours of paid time off. Or unpaid time, I'm sorry.
Department of Water Resources is requesting a board approve unpaid medical leave for Gail Knight, second of patients, worker number 2330, under section 6.12, please, on the personnel policy and procedure, and will begin August 18th, 2016, 80 hours, extending his probationary period.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly.
Aye.
Mr. Spud.
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on here is Sam Farmagiano, our inspector slash ensuring technician, has provided us with his notice of retirement effective November 30th. He's been with us for 30 years. He's got a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, so I want to try to get his replacement inspector in to work with him for a few months before he can retire, so he can impart a lot, hopefully all of his knowledge, but he's got so much, I don't think he could do it in a, in a short period of time. I'm still learning stuff from him. I've been here for 10 years, so, but, so as I want to advertise for the construction inspector for the union contract, we'll advertise internals for 10 days, and if somebody, we don't have an internal one, we'll go out and advertise external.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of construction inspector number 2322 for a period of 10 days in accordance with the union contract. In the event no qualified candidate is found, the position will be advertised externally until...
You know, in the service, when you're discharged, I don't know how many people know this, if you've only got a four-year term, then the military reserves the right to recall you on its need. You got a six-year obligation. Yes, you have a six-year obligation, so with this guy retiring, I think we ought to have the, keep the contract open to force him to come back for, you know...
He's offered to come back part-time if we need him, but only, you know, during weather, when it's between 50 and 70 and sunny.
Doesn't he live right down next to the 35?
He lives just outside, yeah, just outside of Sheridan there.
He's close by, we know where he lives. Okay, good. You read it, right? Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spud.
jerking off, I was asking questions.
Hello, Nick.
Morning.
Morning.
Are they ever gonna finish 322? Is this gonna be a year, is this a career project for some people?
Could be, it could be.
They're putting a subway in.
Are they gonna put curbs along the sides now?
We already have, so I don't know.
I don't need any more subways.
Every corner, there's a subway, right? More to go for there for the inspectors, you know, until they're ready to prove it, so. Item 11 on the agenda is to approve the final change order for the annual pavement marking, polyester pavement marking project, is actually a decrease of $2,400 and change.
No, we don't want decreases.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, final decreasing the contract with an arrow mark incorporated for the application of polyester pavement markings to various roads, yard counties for the year 2016, in the amount of $2,416.09.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spud.
Commissioner Spud.
Items 12 through 15, I'm just, they all kind of go together, they'll hump together, but in a nutshell, what we're working to do here is to accept some mortgage deeds in the Canyon Lake subdivision, something we've done for the performance and maintenance guarantees, for the work that they've performed for water resources and new subdivisions, and also for the county engineers for roadway. As has been done in the past, Canyon Lakes will hold a parcel, put it up as their bond, and then a few months later, somebody will want to buy that piece of property. So now then, they need to release that bond and put another one in its place, so, and that's portion of what's happening here. In addition, they are hosting the bonds for the performance and maintenance guarantees for a new subdivision road, Popular Way off of Northwood, part of Canyon Lake subdivision 13. Project, the road was actually completed last year, they still had some work to do on their end, Punch List Side Quarry can be completed, but that is done. So they are asking two things, one, to accept subplot 310 to be held as a performance guarantee and maintenance guarantees for both the engineer's office and the water resources for subdivision 13C of Popular Way. This request approved and accept subplot 309 in the Canyon Lake subdivision 13B. This will take the place of the current subplots 20 and 21 being held for the quarry circle, of which you approved last year. And then to release subplots number 20 and 21, those are the ones that were originally held, but they want to sell those parcels, I think they have a plan to join them and combine them and then sell them. And then finally, I have on here is to sign the final plaque for Canyon Lake subdivision 13B Popular Way, which will become Township Road 1017, in Bay Ridge Township.
You said 1017, I have 107.
101, oh, 1070, sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
1070, sorry.
Subdivision 17C?
13C.
Or 13C?
Yeah. This would be the last active subdivision road that we actually have been built, and there's no, nothing on the works to start anything new, or anything left to complete other than ones that are already in maintenance.
You want to go with the gap? Okay.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve, accept and execute the mortgage deed for subplot 310, parcel 02421130, in Canyon Lakes County subdivision 13B, to be held as the performance guarantee and maintenance guarantee for the engineer's office and the parting of water resources for the Canyon Lakes County subdivision 13C of Popular Way, TR 1070 in Bay Ridge Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve, accept and execute the mortgage deed for subplot 309, parcel 02421309, Canyon Lakes County subdivision 13B, to be held as the performance guarantee and maintenance guarantee for the engineer's office for the Canyon Lakes County subdivision 13B quarry circle, TR 1016 in Bay Ridge Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the two mortgage releases for subplot number 20, parcel 02421114, and subplot 21, parcel 02421115, in the Edwards Landing subdivision, Bay Ridge Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the final plaque for Canyon Lakes County subdivision 13C, Popular Way, TR 1070 in Bay Ridge Township.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spud.
Aye.
Mr. Spud.
Can we just send this one to the jury?
Yes.
Sure you're off the rest of the day then?
Off the rest, no, okay, we got a little bit of work.
Ah, okay.
Between these raindrops, you know.
You drew the short straw, you had to come over here and sit in front of us, but then as a reward, you get to bail.
No, it's not the case, we got guys working, so. Thank you very much.
Page 1, we're out, do the next question. The commissioner's office is requesting the board cancel session on Tuesday, September 13th, 2016, and then due to the, the value we did for Ralph.
I'll make the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I... Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spud. Mr. Spud.
What we're doing in place of that?
That's my next question.
Follow along, I'm trying to find my name.
Thursday 15. Because we're canceling Tuesday.
And why are we not doing Tuesday?
Because we have a peri-drill, the evacuated drill.
Oh, it's on that day?
It's on, it's always on a Tuesday, and so I double-checked before I put it on the agenda that, yes, it will still be held on that Tuesday, so we will be dropped off with...
Jay, do we need conjunction with the drill? Is this at the same place, or is it, we're not going to some...
Tomorrow is the exercise, the, the exercise, the pre-drill, the practice drill, and then in September is the actual evaluated drill.
But they're both gonna be over at DES, they're not gonna be like we did a few years ago at...
No.
Just needed to know where to go. So we need to cancel the meeting, we have a motion for that?
We already did that, you're a year old.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Okay, so then I need to know whether you want to schedule Thursday, the 15th, or not have a meeting at all that week?
You're not here.
Ralph is gone. Because if you look at the schedule, you have a meeting on Tuesday, August 30th, and then we have a second meeting that week, Thursday, we're at the fair on September 1st. The following week is Labor Day on Monday, so there's no meeting on Tuesday, but we have a meeting on Thursday, the 8th. So then the following week is, we just canceled the 13th, so we can either do no meeting that week at all, or schedule the 15th.
Since Ralph's not here, I mean, it's up to us, but the, between Ralph and I, but the, are we gonna put folks in that hurt because they don't have a meeting to come to, to get things approved and stuff, because of the way they look at the meetings coming? We occasionally have weeks without meeting, and if there's anything, it's in my authority to sign, I decide the financials, so. I mean, I'll go with Blake on this, I... It doesn't matter, I mean, we could, we could, well, it's September 13th, and that's...
That's plenty of time.
That's closer than I think, you know, but, I mean, we have a couple of weeks if there, if it looks like we're gonna get buried by something, we can, we can still call it as long as it's 48 hours early, right?
Right.
Ahead. All right, so let's just wait, we'll wait. Rubber band give up? And then if something comes up, we'll... I'm expecting pictures of that mirror.
I can't wait.
Be at the zoo?
You gave me that you are in Texas from, you told me that you were leaving on Monday, the 29th.
29.
And then I thought, originally I thought that you were not going to be here for fair on Thursday, but...
Yeah, you told me that you'd be coming.
You told me that you were gonna be here, and that you weren't leaving again until the 4th.
Yeah, so, I think that they, I'll have to check, but I think I'll be here on, August 30th is on Tuesday, so I might, I'll let you know for sure then.
Okay, and then I have you leaving on the 4th, not coming back until like the 24th.
Okay, yeah. So what's the schedule for tomorrow?
We get called, right?
You will get notified?
Yeah, it's usually right around 8:00 AM or a little bit. You have to wait for the call before you're gonna be going there. We have to wait? Mostly, I mean, by coincidence, you haven't been to New York, I don't think you've been to that one.
Do they notify by text?
Only on your cellphone, and you're sitting in the lot.
Do they notify by text also?
I think they do.
That's how I usually get mine, by text.
They better not count on me. If they're using that cellphone, they don't want to count on me. I get it two days later.
Oh, should do a jury.
Okay. Okay, we don't have to vote on it, as long as we all get it and walk out.